This is a Radioplasma special presentation. The Holyoke City Council Ward Candidates Forum. On this forum, the ward candidates for city council will answer questions from the media and the community previous to the election of November 7. The ward candidates are: Ward 1 Gladys Lebron Martinez Juan Sanchez. Ward 2 Nelson Roman Jay Anthony Smith. Ward 3 David Bartley Darlene Elias. Ward 4 Josie Valentin. Ward 5 Linda Bacon. Ward 6 Juan Anderson Burgos James Brunol. Ward 7 Todd McGee. This event is brought to you as a collaboration of the Holyoke Neighborhood Associations, the Holyoke High Herald, El Sol Latino, Holyoke Media, and Radioplasma. We are broadcasting from Kelly Elementary School at 216 West Street in Holyoke, Massachusetts.
Welcome. My name is Johan Rashiverga, producer and host of Radioplasma, independent community media based in Holyoke, Massachusetts. It's an honor and privilege to welcome you to the 2017 Holyoke City Council Ward Candidates Forum. I would like to thank personally the members of the forum planning committee Patricia Divine, Scott McPherson, Joe Corchene, Manuel Farau, and we would like to thank our sponsors, the Holyoke Neighborhood Associations, El Sol Latino, Holyoke Media, the Holyoke Herald, and the Holyoke Public Schools. We are in the Kelly Elementary School, and this event is a collective effort and initiative to bring together community and the city council ward candidates in a public forum that will provide access and availability of information from candidates. Voters have an important choice and head to the polls in six days to decide who will be sitting at city council representing the seven wards, the city of Holyoke at large, and as a mayor of Holyoke. I would like to introduce the panel. For this evening, in no particular order, are Terrence Morfin, Parks and Recreation Commissioner, welcome, thank you for being here with us. Manuel Farau Ramos, publisher and founder of El Sol Latino, welcome, thank you for being here. Maggie McAndrew, staff reporter of the Holyoke Herald, the student-run newspaper of Holyoke High School, welcome, thank you for being here. Our timekeeper tonight is Patty Divine, one of the most important roles in this forum for sure, thank you for being here with us. I want to introduce to you our ward candidates on this forum. For Ward 1 Gladys Lebron Martinez incumbent. Juan Gabriel Sanchez Sanchez challenger. For Ward 2 Nelson Roman incumbent. Jay Anthony Smith challenger. For Ward 3 David Bartley incumbent. Darlene Elias challenger. For Ward 4 Josie Valentin uncontested. For Ward 5 Linda Bacon uncontested. For Ward 6, the incumbent city councillor will no longer continue as such, therefore we have two challenger candidates Juan Anderson Burgos and James Brunol. For Ward 7 Todd McGee uncontested. Councillor Bacon is not available for this forum, and councillor McGee is in a previous commitment out of the state, however, he sends his apologies and wishes good luck to all candidates. The format for tonight is as follows: we will have opening statements, two minutes. Each candidate will be asked one question from the panel for which there will be a two-minute answer. If time allows, we will have a round of questions submitted by the audience at the entrance of this event and chosen by the forum organizing committee and the neighborhood associations. There will be two-minute answers. Then two-minute closing statements. Audience members are only allowed to applaud before or after the forum. We respectfully request refraining from booing, cheering, finger snapping, or hissing. This is to allow the audience listening or viewing at our home after hearing directly from the candidates without interruption. The recording of this forum will be available for public to watch and listen on radioplasma.com, Holyoke Media's YouTube channel, and it will be shared throughout all social media platforms and pages of all involved in organizing this forum. Now let us begin with the candidate's opening statement. We will begin in the order of the wards, and then for the subsequent questions, we will go in reverse and following that order back and forth. So let's start with opening statement by Gladys Lebron Martinez, incumbent city councillor for Ward 1.
Testing. Good evening. My name is Gladys Lebron Martinez, and I'm the current city council for the Ward 1 at this moment. I have lived in the city of Holyoke for the last 40 years. I'm a mother of four, where all my children attended the Holyoke Public Schools. My family is actually here, I also have nine grandchildren who are all actually attending the Holyoke Public Schools. Among them, I have one who is a graduate as well of the grandchildren, which I'm proud to say because it is one of the issues that I know we're encountering in our community, and I can say that my children went through the Holyoke Public Schools, and I was an advocate for this purpose. While I'm doing this introduction, I also want to take the opportunity to thank the coordinators who put this together, and I know a short time that they had to be able to do this, but I wanted to acknowledge these individuals who took the time to do that, otherwise some of us would not have had a chance to share our moment, and I want to just say thank you for the opportunity to be able to express what we can do in this community, thank you.
Juan Gabriel Sanchez Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Gabriel Sanchez. I'm proud to sit here before you as a candidate for Ward 1 city council. Before I begin, I want to thank the organizers of Savannah, Johan Vega, Radioplasma, and the panel here, Manuel Farau from El Sol Latino, Terrence Murphy from Parks and Recs, and Maggie McAndrew from the Holyoke High Herald. Thank you guys so much for this opportunity. Once again, as I said, my name is Juan Sanchez, I'm a candidate for Ward 1 city council. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Holyoke, I was born and raised here. My grandmother came here in the 60s. When she came here, she came with my aunts and uncles at a very young age, and worked hard to ensure that my family had good opportunities, to the point where she reached as a substitute teacher at McMahon School, and she had to retire early due to a minor heart attack. She worked under Mrs. Egan for about 10 years at McMahon School and the Head Start Program. Being, I was also raised by my grandmother, being raised by her, I was taught many things. One of the main things was giving, and I'm proud to say that I've been a 15-plus-year organizer in this city, giving my time, my love, and my dedication to the city, very rarely for recognition. I stand here before you at a crucial time in this city. I'm running because I believe it's time for change in Ward 1, I think it's time for some new ideas and some new visions, and I'm glad to have this opportunity to sit here and share those visions and ideas with you guys, thank you again.
For Ward 2 Nelson Roman.
Thank you all so much, welcome, friends, families, my kindred, my community. On this beautiful Tuesday evening, the sun was shining so nice when we were coming in today, right? I'm just kidding. I wanted to thank you all for being here in Kelly School, in Ward 1, in the heart of the Puerto Rican Cultural District. I think it's really important and telling, and I also want to thank these organizers for giving the ward candidates the equal amount of respect as our mayor candidates and our at-large candidates. I truly feel that we were slighted this cycle, but it's a testament to these organizers and to you Johan, and this amazing panel, and all the organizers for putting this together. How do you quantify two years of work in two minutes? It's almost impossible, but I want to say thank you to all of you, because we did and we have accomplished so much. And I say "we" because no man is an island and no man stands alone. It is not only on my work and my labor, but also that of my colleagues in the chamber, and more importantly, you, the residents of Ward 2, that I look out, that I met two and a half years ago when I knocked on your doors, and I met you in your homes, and I talked to you, and to those who do not live in Ward 2, who care about South Holyoke and Churchill and Springdale and Ingleside, and all of the tangible forward movements that we have done. I'm here today to ask for your vote and your support again for another two years. What Ward 2 needs is a proven leader who has real results for this ward, who's going to continue to fight back against misogyny, homophobia, sexism, racism, who's going to put actual legislation forward, including the anti-gentrification mitigation zone, including banning the box, including passing the Puerto Rican Cultural District, including fighting for our students in the Holyoke Public Schools. I have with all of you, and I carry all of you with me every day, continued this work. My opponent and I have had a really rigorous kind of an election this year, and I really thank my opponent Jay Anthony for it being a spirited and really respectful race this time, it has been a breath of fresh air. I hope to continue on in this work, and I look forward to working with him for the next two years, because I make a pledge of a term limit, I will be stepping down after this two years to try to run at large to make way for future leaders in the ward. Thank you so much.
Jay Anthony Smith challenger for Ward 2.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Anthony Smith, I'm running for ward city councillor Ward 2. First and foremost Nelson, thank you very much for that shout-out per se, but I'd like to just tell everyone here, I'm not here to vote, but I'm here to remind you of how democracy works. The election is coming up in six days. In six days, you'll decide who will be your next mayor, your next city councillors, your next representatives, and it's easy to just check on that box and check whoever you like, whoever is with the party you want, whoever leans with your ideas, whoever says what you say, but I want to remind everyone, there are backroom politics, there are things that we don't know about when we elect these representatives, and I think we need to go in depth and ask about this, and we need to raise these questions, and forums like these are perfect opportunities to do so. Every single election, we put faith in people who are, the idea is that they're going to represent us in these political systems, in this government, and so I want you to just think about this, in six days, you will elect the next people, who will you elect, who will represent you for the next few years until we have the avail, excuse me, availability to reelect again. Thank you very much.
David Bartley.
Good evening. Is it working? I guess it's, good evening everybody. Thank you for the organizers for putting this forum together. It's an honor to be here at the stage with my worthy opponent. Thank you to the voters of Ward 3 who put me forward at the preliminary on the 26th. To take over half the vote in a three-way race was both humbling and gratifying. To the voters of Ward 3, which is Elmwood, Mayor Heights, I thank you for these past six years, it's been the honor of my life to serve. The word "service" is something that I don't take lightly. While in office, I've listened, I've learned, and I've acted on your behalf. There's no doubt that I learned from the best, which are my mother and father. I would also add that working hard as a graduate of Holyoke High School, Class 83, a bachelor's and master's degree from UMass Amherst, and a JD from Western New England College, as well as earning bar rights for both Connecticut and Massachusetts have given me a great perspective. Further, being a homeowner in Holyoke and a business owner in Holyoke in Ward 1 has also given me a great perspective. Let me conclude this way. Take a look at the work I've done, not the words I've said. From Big E Day, from Holyoke Day at the Big E, from the Purple Heart Trail throughout the whole city, from the neighborhood meetings that are innovative, where I combine Ward 3 city council as well as a school committee person, copied throughout the city, they started in Ward 3. For the last four years as well, I chaired a committee, a sleepy dormant committee, that's now one of the most active and successful committees in city council. I look forward to the next two years, I humbly ask for everyone's vote on November 7th, and I look forward to tonight's debate, thank you.
Darlene Elias.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darlene Elias, and I really appreciate the opportunity to debate before you today because I thought at one point, we were not going to be able to do that as ward councillors, and so the extra treat is to be able to debate before you down here in the flats. In government, we have seen the voice of citizens muted or ignored one too many times as a result of political and financial interest. I am running for city council because it is very important to me that the residents of Ward 3, including working individuals, family, and the elderly are well represented in local government. It is the residents and taxpayers who understand best what the needs of their community are, and it is our duty as public servants to represent the interests of constituents and not our own. If elected, together with residents, I will work to address quality of life issues in our ward and city as a whole, and promise to listen to the concerns of all residents with compassion, understanding, and genuine interest to move our city forward and ensure that Holyoke will always be a place that people will want to live and work. As a lifelong resident of Holyoke, homeowner, taxpayer, graduate of the public schools and colleges in the local area, a mother, a social worker, and now probation officer and community organizer who truly cares about our city, I believe that I am qualified to be the voice of Ward 3. I have learned that the signs of a vibrant city and good pub, excuse me, I have learned that the signs of a vibrant city are good public services, infrastructure, and transportation, low crime rates, natural amenities, parks, and low pollution, a supportive business environment for all firms, entrepreneurship, and innovation, education and job training, and more efficient and transparent government. I also know that this will mean tackling tough issues in our city of public safety.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next Josie Valentin.
Good evening, buenas noches. My name is Josie Valentin, I'm the Ward 4 city councillor. I've been honored and privileged to be the Ward 4 city councillor since January of 2014, when I was first sworn in. I'm currently in my second term, looking to be reelected for my third term on November 7th. Although this year I am unopposed, I wanted to make sure to come here tonight to share with you what's important to me and why I feel that I need to make sure that we continue to do this work together. I've only been in Holyoke since 2005, I'm not a long-term lifelong Holyoker, however, I'm involved in projects, initiatives, and community events that make me as worthy as anyone who was born and raised here. And I say that because many times when we're having conversations about which voice matters most, that is forgotten, and we always need to remember that the person who moved into Holyoke six months ago is as valid as the person who was born and raised here. I've been able to be on the Public Service and Public Safety Committee this term around, and it's given me an opportunity to work specifically on quality of life issues that pertain to the ward. I look forward to continuing to serve and making sure that our constituents are heard in ways in which they feel respected and they feel valued when they come into chambers and when they are addressing us with their concerns anywhere we are. Thank you.
Juan Anderson Burgos.
I would like to thank everyone who took the time to put this forum together, as well as the voters who are interested in this race. My name is Juan Anderson Burgos, I am running for the Ward 6 city council seat. My desire to serve our city comes from a proud family history. In 1953, my grandparents moved to Holyoke and searched for a better life for their family. My grandparents loved everything about Holyoke. Like most people starting out in a new place, my grandparents searched for the jobs that would provide the essentials for their young family and a bright future for their children. My grandfather began to work for Hart Wool, and my grandmother worked as a seamstress for Alco Dress. They made plans and paved the way for their children's future, working hard, day in and day out. Planning is fundamental, this is what I learned from my grandparents when I was growing up here in Holyoke. My grandfather would always challenge me in whatever tasks I was facing, he would say, "Do you have a plan? In order to succeed, you must have a plan." I held that notion close to my heart. Every time I am face-to-face with a challenge, I think back to those moments I had with my grandfather. My grandparents had a plan, and I am living proof that it worked. I must continue their legacy and help plan for the future of this beautiful city. Having a plan also means working with others to reach your goals. The people I want to serve are not just voters to me, they are partners in the work we have to do to help this city to be a place we are all proud to call our home. This is the sense of partnership that I will carry with me in everything I do as your councillor, thank you.
James Brunol.
Good evening. I'd like to echo the thanks of everyone for the planners of tonight, and again, express my appreciation that this event is happening, so to all of you, thank you. A few years ago, a friend of mine who was running in an election likened the process of campaigning and election to a really long job interview, and I think that's a pretty good analogy. So tonight, in this debate for Ward 6 at least, you have sitting in front of you two candidates. Neither of us have ever done the job before, Ward 6 will have a new councillor. So what do these two candidates bring to the table in this job interview that we're having? So one of the candidates, myself, I have 100% voting record since I was 18 years old. I've never missed a primary, a state, a federal election vote. My opponent, who has spoken about this before, has iterated the fact that he was not early involved in politics and came to it late. Since 2002, when my opponent did register to vote, he has a 40% voting record in city, state, and federal elections. By his own admission, he came to it late, but I would say even since that time, his participation unfortunately has not been as high as it should be. Another issue that I think is of grave concern to the city and to Ward 6 is the issue of donations to campaigns by businesses with active issues before the city council. All of you have read the paper, you all know what's going on. I will say tonight, I accepted no money from any organization with any issue that will be active before the city council in my term if I'm lucky enough to serve. My opponent, I think unfortunately, cannot say the same. He has accepted, and I have the papers, $2,500 from Chicago, from Maryland, from Florida, from a business that will have an active concern during our term.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
We will now start our round of questions from our panel, and I would like to start with the question from Manuel Farau Ramos, publisher and founder of El Sol Latino. The order for these questions will be beginning now with Mr. James Brunol, and we will go in reverse order.
Buenas tardes a todos y a todas. Good evening, to all of you. My first question is related to language. The dominant language of one-third of the residents of Holyoke is Spanish. Due to the language barrier, these residents have traditionally been marginalized and often ignored by the same political process designed to make their voices heard, know their aspiration, and solve their problems.
So Patty, you got to restart the clock. All right, thank you. So thank you for the question, and I would agree that we in Holyoke do have a history of people of Hispanic heritage being marginalized in our city, and one of the things that makes me sensitive to that is for the past 25 years, as somebody working in human services, I have worked with marginalized people every day. My current work is in workforce development on High Street in Holyoke for the state. I would say 70% of the people that I work with who come into our office are people of Hispanic origin from Holyoke and from surrounding communities, I work with them every day. I work with people to help them go to college up at HCC where Josie works. I work with people to help them get jobs in the community. I work with businesses in the community to help hire people from Holyoke. Everyone who walks through my door, I work with. So I work with people of Hispanic, Latino origin, I work with people with addictions issues, I work with people with Cory issues, people with incarceration in their past, people have made choices and are looking to move beyond them. I work actively with veterans. I spend a day a month at the jail in North Hampton, working with people who are currently incarcerated, preparing them to come out into the community and to be active contributors to the community. In addition, I teach about social value and social inclusion through the Shriver Institute, which is in Boston, named for Unitas Kennedy Shriver, who people may know from the Special Olympics, and I've been teaching for there for 24 years as an adjunct member, teaching about the process of social demarginalization, social, how to bring people into social inclusion and full social opportunity in community, and I will bring that expertise to the city council, thank you.
Juan Anderson Burgos.
Thank you for that question, and it deserves a very thoughtful answer. It is no shock, obviously, we are expecting an influx of Latinos that will be coming from Puerto Rico. Some of them are my own family, and this is, we are in dire need. So I was given the opportunity to meet with Betty Medina, the director of Enlace, I was there for the grand opening, and there were some amazing people who I've got business cards and I'm in contact with, and these are the people that I am going to be working with to make sure that the influx of Latinos coming to Holyoke or Springfield in the general area are taken care of. We can't expect a city councillor to come up with a case where, hey, listen, I have an issue with my kids, I'm looking for an apartment, or any kind of issue you may think that a family in dire need needs. We can't expect somebody to say, well, hold on, let me get a translator for you. I speak two languages. Born and raised here, American, proud, and I'm also Latino, which means a lot for those people that may be coming here, that it's very time-sensitive. I expect nothing less. I will work hard, day in, day out, just like my grandparents did when they came here. I will make sure that these people are residents here, and the people that might be coming here are taken care of. Thank you so much.
Thank you, now, let's listen to Josie Valentin.
Not yet Patty, not yet.
Yes, that is correct. Mr. Brunol has one-minute rebuttal for that answer, my apologies.
Thank you. I want to say two things in my one-minute time. One is that, this is my second election, last time my Last time, I knocked on over 3,000 doors in the city of Holyoke, and this time, I have gone to every door in the ward of Ward Six at least once. A lot of people weren't home, but I left a card or something, and I've gone to most of them twice. I have yet to meet a person in the city of Holyoke that I have not been able to communicate with. Every person I've met, every person I have spent time with, I have been able to communicate. So it has not yet been an issue. As far as inclusion, you know, my family came here in the late 1800s, and they are French, French-Canadian. And one of the clubs I belong to is the Beavers Club. Talk about a history of exclusion in Holyoke. The Beavers Club started because two French guys tried to join the Rotary and got blackballed by the Irish. So it's nothing new, but we can overcome it together.
Now, let's move on to Josie Valentine for answering the question placed by Mr. Manuel Frav.
Okay. Same question, right? Okay. So what I want to say regarding the question about language is something that's not new to me. It's something that I've spoken about since the first time I ran for office. Ward Four is about 70% Latino. And other than a counselor many years ago, it is my understanding, based on the history that I've been privy to, that no one else as Ward Four city counselor has been fully bilingual. And so to me, the fact that even constituents being able to communicate with the person who is supposed to represent them on the city council, that person not being able to speak the language that they are either most comfortable in or the language that they only speak is terribly, terribly crucial. So I am very proud of the fact that I am able to communicate with my constituents very clearly in terms of both languages. Spanish is actually my first language. And I'm also proud of the fact that very early on, when I joined the city council, and I actually spoke to Frav about this after, because he interviewed me about it, I filed an order about how to make city council meetings, the city website, and other mechanisms that are available for our constituents, not just voters, but everyone in general, how to make them more accessible for Spanish speakers. And so I was able to work with the IT department at City Hall to improve the translate feature on the city website. And unfortunately, because of funds, having live translators is not feasible at this time for our city. However, the fact that we were able to have that conversation, thinking of the fact of how do we make our resources in our city most accessible to everyone, was introduced based on those conversations. So very proud to be able to represent the ward in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie Valentine. And just to rectify, I want to allow Juan Anderson Burgos to rebuttal, so my apologies for that. One minute for to respond.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, listen, James, I know you said you walked Ward Six, and I don't know if you forgot, but that also includes Bolden Village in Jarvis Heights. And I'm sorry to tell you, but I've spoken to a lot of Latinos who do not know a lick of English. Again, it is very important to open up dialogue in two languages, especially when there are Latinos in Ward Six, and plenty of them, I've met them personally, not just last time, but this time, and their concerns are that their voices are not heard. So if you don't understand Spanish, it is very important that you do, because any voices unheard is unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan Anderson Burgos. Now, let's move on to Darlene Elias to answer the same question about language placed by Manuel Frav.
So I see the issue of language being a systemic one. I've been living in Holyoke for over 40 years, and I recall coming in from New York City and living in South Holyoke in a primarily dominant Spanish-speaking Puerto Rican community. And the problems that existed then continue to exist now, 40 years later, and that is where the school system, the city in general, you know, government is not very receptive to changing and moving forward and progressing as far as meeting the needs of bilingual individuals. And it doesn't really mean only Spanish-speaking. So to me, that's a really big concern. Access is a major issue. But even more importantly for me is language for students in the school system. Bilingual education was eliminated many years ago, and now students are forced to learn by immersion. And for me, that's very concerning, and I am aware that there's a lawsuit right now trying to deal with that issue, and I'd be in favor of Spanish-speaking, full Spanish-speaking classes and assistance in school and throughout the community.
David Bartley.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and thanks for the question. I can say that I'm a better person, and I think Holyoke is a better city for all the diversity that we have. I can say firsthand that working with the Ward Four councillor, the Ward Two councillor, the Ward One councillor, Dier Stata Lopez, hearing from Darlene, hearing from persons of Hispanic origin, has made me a better person, a better elected official. I have a lot of good friends on the Holyoke Police Department, the Holyoke Fire Department, for example, that are Hispanic. I'll say this, though, for the record. It's got to start with Room One. So I look across this room here, and I see a lot of diversity. But when I look in city government, I don't see a lot of diversity. I don't see a lot of diversity in terms of department heads. There's been opportunity to appoint department heads, either women or persons of Hispanic origin. Six years, I don't see it. Committees, I don't see it. And I mean not just hang around committees and talk, 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 I mean paying committees. We receive a stipend. And I mean powerful committees. We can actually do something. I don't see it. Does anybody see it? It doesn't exist. It's a lack of leadership. Fortunately, there are some great people up here, some great candidates. You can see the diversity of this table. It's wonderful. I'm glad you brought it to my attention now. It's the first time, I mean, it's not the first time I've heard this, but it's just kind of a forum where it's all public. I think, again, it's going to make me a more sensitive official and a better official. So hopefully, we can do something about it. I know my colleagues in the city council, they're receptive to this, and we're warm to it, and we'll do our best to try to broaden our perspective. Thanks for the question.
Darlene, you have one-minute rebuttal.
I want to thank David, actually, for his assessment as far as the lack of diversity in the city, because he's, you know, point on. If you look at the representation of Latinos and African-Americans throughout the city of Holyoke and city-employed positions, whether it's the police department, whether it's the fire department, and who gets promoted, it seems to be who you know sometimes and not what you know and what experience you have. And in order for us to build relationships and trust with the community, we need to have individuals in these positions that reflect the diverse population in our community. So thank you for that, David.
I don't think there's a need to rebut that, so I'll say thank you, Darlene.
Well, just to directly answer it straightforward, yes, I have taken marginalized people into my campaign. I live in a neighborhood that is one of the most marginalized wards of them all, Ward Two. And every day, you know, when I've talked to people, I come across people who don't want to open the door, because they might think I'm police. They think I'm a social worker, you know, or they don't know any English. My language is, my Spanish is pretty broken down, but I still try, and I try as much as I can to just get the words out. And if I can't get them to vote for me, to get them to vote at all, and to get them to participate in this democratic process, because I think that the problem is that we look at it as they don't understand the words, but it goes past not understanding the words, it's the concepts behind the words. So if you understand what, you know, the word "voting" means, it doesn't matter if you don't know what the process is. And that's where I feel we need to do more. You know, marginalized goes past just being Hispanic. We have blind Hispanics, handicapped Hispanics, and then let's just go on and on. Marginalization is not just a one-layer thing, it can go deeper and deeper. And we need to think about this, and with the policies that we're passing, the things that we do, it may not directly, we may not directly see an effect, but there is always effects to the policies that we pass. So thank you.
Nelson Roman.
So primeramente que nada, gracias a todos que están velando la casa que hablan español. Gracias a Manuel Frav siempre por tener su periódico. Y yo soy bien orgulloso representar un barrio que tiene 90% de la población que habla en español. Y yo soy bien orgulloso que la primera cosa que yo hizo fue pasar era la cultura puertorriqueña. Que eso fue a mí fue la más importante para nuestra comunidad. What I voy a hablar en inglés. What I said was, I want to thank, first of all, Manuel Frav, and I want to thank all of those voters at home who speak Spanish. And I'm proud to represent a ward that's almost 90% Spanish, Spanish-speaking individuals. And it's about that intellectual respect. That's why one of the first orders that I got passed, and I'm grateful to my colleagues for understanding why it was important for us to pass the Puerto Rican Cultural District, why it was important for us to ask for Oscar López Rivera to be released. But it goes far beyond that. Language, my materials, all my campaign signs are English and Spanish. Let's talk about that. When you drive down the street and all these campaign literatures and signs are in English only, what does that tell our community that's 50% Latino? And the next sentence is, we're going to be a majority of this community, right? Let's talk about how in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, all the city councillors come, but in the Puerto Rican Day Parade, it's only the Latino councillors. Let's talk about how the fact that bilingual education in the state got eliminated, and that we, as a city council, have yet to call and demand this state to reinstate bilingual education, because it marginalized and affects the Latino students, in which the school population is 70, 80% Latino, and 90% of the teaching population, with all due respect, is white. So if you can't understand the culture and the language barriers, there's a lot more we have to do in the city of Holyoke. And lastly, we have to ensure that all of our city council meetings, documents, paperwork is all translated in English and Spanish. And let's stop tokenizing a few individual Latinos on boards and commissions. And yes, this is my biggest criticism, with all due respect to this administration, I agree with my colleague Dave. We have to get more Latinos and people from the lower wards down, and that's why I asked for the facts. When there are less people from Ward Two, One, and Five nominated to committees, but Ward Five, Six, and Four dominate our commissions and committees, if you take a poverty map and a people of color map in Holyoke, you overlap them, they're identical.
Jay Anthony Smith, if you wish to rebut, you have one minute.
Well, I'm gonna use the other minute of my time, since he doesn't want to rebut. What I would like to continue to say around this line, around intellectual respect, I'm also proud to have been the only candidate, ward candidate, who has sponsored El Sol Latino. It's the only Latino news source that's fully bilingual that goes out to this community. And yes, I pay my $500 a month to get my campaign ad in there, but what if that news source folds? When's the last time you invested in Enlace de Familias that's taking care of our Puerto Rican families? When's the last time you donated to Nuestras Ráíces that's keeping our agriculture farming alive? When's the last time you came to the lower wards to volunteer? And where I will applaud, and this is what I'm seeing, is that these candidates, because of the work that we've all been doing with the neighborhood associations, with Carmen and Jerry, and Paul and Audra, and Felicita, these candidates are coming down there. So I applaud Jay for coming down, I applaud Mike for coming down, and I applaud Alex for coming down. And I want to thank my man and my, I'm gonna take this last 30 seconds, thanks my partner and my mother-in-law for letting me be so crazy and passionate about the Latino community. And we have to work together with our Black African-American community. We have 2,000 African-American community members in this city, and Cuji, thank you for being a leader, but we have to work together to stop this race divide. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson Roman. I want to remind the audience to refrain from noises, so that way we can utilize the time for the convenience of the candidates and also for the candidates. So next, Juan Sanchez.
Thank you, Manuel, for that great question regarding language. Let me just be clear, both me and my opponent both speak Spanish. Spanish was the first language at home. As I said, I grew up with my grandmother, so, you know, going home, I had to speak Spanish. At school, I spoke English, so I'm proud to say I'm fully bilingual. And when we talk about language, one of my main goals in running for Ward One city council is to keep people informed and involved. For too long, dissemination of information is not going on right in this city. Too many people don't know when there's board openings, when there's events happening, when there's chances for them to get involved and start a small business and programs like Spark that I know the city is pushing, and things of that nature. That's why if elected your next Ward One city councillor, I plan on doing two things about that. Number one is to create three neighborhood associations and really engage the residents in ways they're not being engaged now, really get them involved in the political process and the community process, because I understand that me by myself can't get much done, but when you show up with multiple residents, really advocating for the needs of the people, things really get done. The second thing that I would do as a candidate is create a monthly newsletter with happenings, bilingual, by the way, monthly newsletter, with happenings of what's going on in the city. What are the board openings? What are the orders that the city council has passed? What are other things? If there's a festival going on and things of that nature. So I really want to make sure that every resident, whether they speak English or Spanish, knows what's going on in the city, and that they stay involved and that they stay informed. Thank you.
Gladys Lebron Martinez.
This is a great question. Let me just tell you, the year that I came here to the city of Holyoke, I was actually a transfer from Chama Bank, back in the day, Chama Bank does not exist anymore, to be one of the bilingual tellers in this bank. And this is when I encountered the population of our Hispanic here. And let me tell you that I was asked to come here and be a bilingual teller, and was told at one point that if they did try to speak English, not to speak this language. This is when I decided this job, not for me. It was in the wrong, you know, it was a wrong move. I was not allowed to use the language. If you guys heard about some lawsuits that actually, or some movement that was back in the 80s, I was probably still be one of us. But I just want to share that, and the reason I ran for city school board was when Question Two passed, the question of elimination of bilingual classes being taught in the public schools. And I was charged by the community to run for office while I was working on Nueva Peranza. I had just left Nueva Peranza and started the job that I'm doing, a career point in the workforce development, and I was charged to run for office because they needed a candidate at the seat when there were no representation in the seat of school board. For the last 20 years, Betty Medina was the last person there, and then I came on board. After running for office, I left the position and then was told, why don't you try and go for the city council? We need a representative there. It was only Diodado López and then myself. I saw the issues that were still affecting our community, and we needed some representation there. At the time, it was only Diodado López, myself came on board, then Anthony Soto, Nelson, and who else? And Josie, Josie. Josie Valentine first, then Nelson, I'm sorry. But I just want to share that this is how I realized that we needed more representation, and I have represented people. I have been talking to them about the opportunities that are there on a one-on-one basis. Thank you.
Juan, you have one-minute rebuttal.
Well, first, before I begin, I just want to thank Gladys for her years of service to the community. I want to commend her on the work that she's done. She's done a lot of great things for a lot of people, including myself, so I do want to say thank you to Gladys for all the work that she's put into the community for many years. With that said, it's one thing to be able to speak the language and to translate, and then it's another thing to really engage the residents that speak that language. There's hardly any resident engagement going on in the ward, and that's why I think that really needs to happen. I really think, when you look at other lower wards, for example, Ward Two, another ward that's predominantly Latino, they're having festivals, they're having cleanups, the residents are engaged in ways that haven't been happening before. You know, I got to commend that councillor Roman on all that work. And I really want to replicate a lot of that in Ward One, and really ensure that all residents really feel they have an opportunity to be heard, to be listened to, to get involved, to not feel disempowered at times when they show up to places like city council, they feel intimidated. I want to show people that they should not be intimidated, that every voice matters. Thank you.
Gladys, you have one-minute rebuttal.
I'd like to share that there's actually a council association that had just started in this neighborhood, and I, you know, want to challenge anyone who wants to be part of the membership to see ourselves, and even Izzy Rivera, who's here in the crowd. But again, yeah, there is some challenges that, you know, my colleagues has brought up in attention. I do, and I have, you know, inform people of activities and events that are happening in the community when they're happening. I've encouraged individuals to know about opportunities such as the Sparks program. There's people who have graduated from the neighborhood that have taken advantage of some small business opportunities to get engaged. to get engaged. I have supported many events in the community, whether it be financially, whether it be activities that I have come to support hands-on, such as tournaments and et cetera. And I will continue, you know, I am open to that. Even, you know, to support whoever gets in the seat. Thank you.
So, Juan?
Hi, yeah, I really did my rebuttal, Juan. Thank you.
Thank you. So with this, we complete the question by Manuel Frau. Let's move on to the question and now by another of our panel members. Let's listen to Terrence Murphy, Parks and Recreation Commissioner.
Thank you. First of all, let me say, having been where you are today, thank you for your willingness to dedicate your time, your energy, and your ideas and your commitment to the city of Holyoke. We need more people willing to do those kind of things. And I just want to thank you on behalf of myself and the rest of the citizens of Holyoke because we really do have to get more people involved. With that said, let me ask a question. This has been an issue that's been going on. There has been much debate about the amount of apparatus needed within the fire department and about the new format proposed by the fire chief, which reduces the number of fire pieces from seven to six. Do you think this is a good plan? And have you checked to see if during the first 90 days of this plan, the six remaining trucks have in fact consistently had more personnel on them than when we operated seven trucks?
We will start now in order numeric from Ward 1 from Ward 2 to Ward 7, beginning with Gladys Lebron Martinez.
Wow, that was a very long question. What I can say is that I have voted always when it's in regards to public service and public safety. So the concern of eliminating, I have voted to restore fundings when it's being considered not to be available to the departments for us to vote on it. As you know, it's like 15 of us. And if we don't get the enough vote, it doesn't go through. It's very unfortunate. I am one person who do not like to play with people's lives. And that, to me, it's in regards to what is needed. If the department needs the equipment to do what they need to do, I will be, you know, first to vote for that. I would not want this to be a risk in our community. So I witnessed the first fire when I bought my house 20 years ago on Elm and Capit Street, when the whole lot went in fire. And that was devastating. It devastated about more than 200 families. And then the most recent one here in the flats. So I do not play with people's lives. And I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's listen to Juan Sanchez.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to be clear. I do not believe in pinching pennies at the cost of people's lives and/or livelihoods. This is why I got endorsed by the Holyoke Firefighters Union Local 1693, because they understood that I'd be a strong champion for full fire safety. When we talk about a city like Holyoke, although the population has decreased, our infrastructure is very different than other cities based on our population, especially in terms of large dwellings and large buildings. It makes no sense to me to cut an apparatus in the lower wards where you have buildings in which 12 to 14 families live. It makes no sense to me to put people's lives at risk in a city that was once the arson capital of the world. We lost so many lives to fires in the 70s and 80s. My grandmother and my family in the early 80s was a victim of one of those fires. We lost all our pictures and memories. We can't, gotta keep that history alive. Although our city has changed, the priorities haven't. And when it comes to public safety, that should be the number-one role of a public servant, is to ensure that no matter where you live, whether on Bemis or Bauer, if you call 911, you should get a service just as adequate and just as quickly, no matter where you live in the city. So once again, no, I do not think it's a good idea to cut the apparatus from seven to six. And I'll continue to be, as I was in the Essex House, as I have been on this fire issue, a strong advocate for public safety in the city of Holyoke. Thank you.
Gladys Lebron Martinez, you have one minute rebuttal.
I agree with my colleague that public safety should be the first in our agenda for anyone. Again, it is, you know, I witnessed fires here while I've been in the city. And I understand the devastation right now, you know, and the grieving of many of the families who lost lives in this past fire. I've been a champion, you could look, you could look it up. This is in record. I have, you know, voted in favor to support the finance, and it's been voted down. So I can just tell you that public safety has been my goal. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I want to be clear here. It's one thing to vote in favor of something. It's another thing to advocate and follow up and debate it and go toe-to-toe with your fellow counselors on these issues. It's one thing to say one out of 15 votes. It's another thing to be that one voice that stands strong and strongly by their convictions. I promise that if elected your North Ward 1 City Councilor, it won't only be a vote. I'll be a voice, I'll be a force to be reckoned with when it comes to public safety in the city of Holyoke. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan Sanchez. Now, let's listen to Nelson Roman for Ward 2.
Yes, thank you so much. So I want to say, when I first got elected, the very first thing I did before even getting sworn in was I sat down with the fire chief. And I really got an in-depth review and analysis on the fire department budget. And I met with the head of the Public Safety Committee. And I really got into depth around what the budget is. We as a council, all of us, have unanimously supported fully funding police and fire. And this is one of the areas where I disagree with the administration and without fully funding police, fire, and our school departments. And we as a council did support that full funding this year. We fought for that. That's where we're losing. But albeit, with all of that said, I trust in the fire chief. And that's where I will applaud him. I have, and he came down to Ward 2. He did a Ward 2 review. Ward 2 is covered by fire stations 1, 3, 5, and 6, and a total of six apparatuses. So this, let's dispel this myth that Engine 2 is Ward 2 and Ward 2 is Engine 2. I really do applaud that we're covered and we're safe. You know why? Because unfortunately, this community's seen a lot of tragedy. And it wasn't just the flats fire, which I'm so terribly sad about those losses. But on Main Street, we've had a fire. In Ward 2 in these last two years, I've seen six fires. Six, including my own apartment building. My partner was asleep. We almost burnt down. Six. The fire department's there without hesitation. But what we're not discussing is these slum lords. And that's why I support going after these slum lords who live in Brooklyn, who live in the Bronx, who live in China, and aren't taking care of the residents. So I'm all about talking about public safety. But where's the conversation around these slum lords who owe taxes, who have abandoned buildings and are leaving our safety in jeopardy? So yes, the fire department, I trust the chief. We fully fund it. I'm mad that we got rid of the independent review. But where's this conversation about these slum lords? And I will applaud the administration on forming the Problem Property Group. Where I have to stand and applaud this administration is that they are doing a great job at targeting blighted buildings and taking them down. And let's take back these slum lords. And I thank Paul Payer and the administration for going after these slum lords as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Now, let's listen to Jay Anthony Smith.
First, I'd like to say that public safety is not a matter of budget. Budgets become irrelevant when you put them against lives. Whether it's a budget problem or a problem with administration or a problem with the city council, I think it's a problem that we need to address of what's going on with our fire department and with the fires that are going on in Holyoke. I live in Ward 2, one of the areas that are most affected by fires due to the high concentration of population living in the neighborhood. And we need to think about the amount of people who live there. It's not just adults, it's children, it's elderly, it's everything. Babies, you know? And we need to think about this, that these are human lives that we're putting at stake because of a budget or because of calculations or numbers or digits. But numbers cannot replace human lives. And so we need to take this all into account when we are passing our policies, when we are coming up with a solution, when we're beginning a budget, whatever it may be. We need to think about the people that we are affecting with our policies. Because our policies, once they leave the chamber, they affect people in-street, in real life. This is the reality of democracy. This is the reality of the representation process that we go through. And we need to elect people who are going to fight for our people in these wards, for their lives, for their safety. And that's all I have to say about that issue.
Nelson Roman, you have one minute rebuttal.
Well, thank God you got it porfiung right here. I'm ready to fight all the time. And I will say this. It goes far beyond what happens when the building collapses. It happens, what happens to those families? Where are they going? Let's talk about displacement. Let's talk about that all these fires have burned down over 100 units of housing. And those low-to-matter-income folks aren't coming back to this town. But that's why I'm also proud of the things. And even though we fought on the minutia, I'm very proud of the Community Preservation Act. Let's use some of this money that we passed as a council to fix and create more low-to-affordable housing units. Let's talk about when someone dies and gets buried. There's no funeral fund for these families. I've donated to so many funerals. And I thank Carmen, she's the one that comes and says, "Listen, they need help." But what do we do? How are we bearing our communities? What's the help for these people when they come out of these tragedies? And so exactly what you're talking about, Jay, caring about the after, is what we do. And I also, again, want to thank everyone in this community who came together after the Main Street fires, after the flats fires, to care about the human being. But we need a better emergency response plan in this city for any natural or man-made disaster. Thank you so much.
Jay Anthony?
Nelson, you're very right. It's definitely about the after. But I want to touch it back to an argument that you made earlier because whether you win or I win or whoever wins at this table, I want to make sure that this becomes very clear, that we need to think about the post as well as the after. Because the post is what leads to this. The slum lords, the budget cuts, whatever it may be. The things that we do previously will affect us down the road, whether it's tomorrow, whether it's two years from now, three years, whatever the time being. It does not matter when these policies will affect us on the long run. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, let's move on to Ward 3. And we'll start with Mr. David Bartley.
Okay, thanks, Juan. I appreciate it. Thanks, Terry. Thanks, Terry, for the question. I'm glad everyone has a chance to see Nelson's act tonight because I get to see that every other Tuesday. And somehow, he credits me for it half the time. But I'm not as fiery as he is, especially tonight. But, so at the risk of sounding like a broken record... Oh, thanks, Anthony. Oh, thanks, Juan. At risk of breaking records. So there's a, not to put a wet blanket on the thing. So Holyoke has a three-person fire commission. And that was set up many years ago. And it's allegedly to separate the fire department from politics. So the fire commission came into city council in a public safety committee meeting with the fire chief. And they said on the record that they would support an audit, which the mayor did not fund. But they said they would support an audit and look at the situation that Commissioner Murphy just presented and which my colleague highlighted. On the record, they said that in city council, a month ago, mayor said no to the money. No to the audit. No to public safety. He said no already to Engine 2. Now, I'm not picking on anybody in particular, am I? I'm just picking on the incumbent in office. This is not a personal attack. I'm just laying out the facts. There was an opportunity we had to do an audit of this situation. It was promised by the fire chief, promised by the fire commissioner. It was struck by the mayor. So we're not the experts in city council. You hear a lot of rhetoric, and you've heard it all right tonight. There's rhetoric coming from this table. And there's a lot of rhetoric in city council. Yes, we support our firefighters. Yes, we support our public safety officials. We'll do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's listen to Darlene Elias.
This is an issue that I've been tracking for some time. Can you hear me?
No.
No? This is an issue that I've been tracking for some time, and it's very concerning to me. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So it's an issue that I feel strongly about because I was displaced many years ago. My brother is here in the audience. And he will attest to the fact that when we first moved to New York, down to South Holyoke, we were a victim of several fires in our building, and we were displaced. And we also observed on many occasions fires in South Holyoke. And we were then placed in Limon Terrace, and we grew up in Limon Terrace. We also took part in a march in South Holyoke all the way to City Hall with caskets protesting. But the reason why we protested was because it appeared to us that there was differential treatment in the community when it came to fire safety, public safety, and community safety. And I would continue to argue that that continues to be the case now. Because if the situation, if an engine would have been decommissioned in any other ward, including my ward, Ward 3, Ward 4 perhaps, where the mayor lives, Ward 5, Ward 6, or Ward 7, we would have never had that situation. We would have never blamed the fire department for this situation. Because you know what? The voters, the constituents from the wards would have never permitted it. And so I would tell you that, in my point of view, this is an issue of discrimination. And will continue to place lives at risk until the fire department is fully funded and operational. and operational and the same goes with the police department. Thank you very much.
David Bartley, you have one-minute rebuttal.
We have similar. We're good.
Let's listen now to Josie Valentin.
Thank you. So, before the fire of New Year's Day, before this topic, obviously, which has been a topic that has been talked about for many, many years in the city of Holyoke. It precedes this administration, it precedes pretty much actually everyone at this table because the councilors that were around for the fires of the eighties and the nineties are not at this table. So, I think we need to look at this as a multifaceted issue. And it's of course very easy to make this issue a very emotional one because it's about lives, it's about loss, not just loss of life, loss of property, loss of, you know, obviously resources. And so, before the fire on New Year's Day, there was a fire right at the corner of my house on Dwight and Linden. It was the day after Thanksgiving and the Red Cross responded to that and the fire department was there immediately, everything, you know, the resources were there. And when the Red Cross showed up, there was not one Red Cross volunteer that spoke Spanish. And so, the folks that were displaced by that fire that night, not only had to deal with the stressor of that obvious chaotic moment, but also not being able to communicate with someone who could help them with whatever the needs were at that moment. That's actually the night that I decided to become a Red Cross volunteer, but that's a different story. So, what I want to say is that this is, it's multifaceted. It's about, you know, we can all sit here and say, of course, we support the fire department, we trust, I mean, I trust the chief. I'm not going to assume that from everyone at this table. And so, I feel that there's obviously some pieces of this puzzle that are more complicated and I appreciate Nelson bringing up the piece about landlords because that's a huge piece and I ran out of time. Thank you.
Let's now listen to Juan Anderson Burlos.
January 1st of 2017 broke my heart. It hit me to the core. And as I sat back, took myself to social media, all I kept seeing was people pointing fingers, pointing fingers, nobody wants to take the blame. And you know what? You can point fingers all you want, but the bottom line is that these lives are not coming back. They're not coming back. So, point fingers all you want. What we need is a solution to make sure that this never, ever happens again. I know a girl, she lived in that building. She came to me, she lost her pets. My heart broke. She tells me, Juan, the alarms were going off for like a week. No one did anything. So, I did research. You know what I found out? Instead of pointing fingers, I found out that the building is 100 years old. What do I know about wires? Wires were much thicker. The cavity in the building was much bigger. Wires are now updated. Wires are very thin. You're ignoring the alarm. It gave oxygen to the building. You could have brought as many firefighters. That building went up in flames. If you're going to point a finger, do your research because the next time, it could have been a life that you saved. Forget about the finger pointing. Thank you.
James Ronald.
Thank you, Terry, for the question. Certainly topical and it's certainly very important. And I want to agree with something Juan just said. The problem here is to find the solution. The lives are lost and they're not coming back. And that's one reason that I want to encourage people to consider voting for me. I've been in the situation more than once of having to find solutions in budgets. When I worked at Goodwill Industries and I was the Director of Services in two states for people, I found money in the budget, I reduced overtime and in a reduced budget situation where we were receiving less funding than previously, I ran the only department at Goodwill that received an exceeds from the state in our annual licensing exam. When I worked at West Mass Elder Care, right down over here at the old Parsons Paper Mill and I was the Director of the Personal Care Management Program, I saw D'Osato come in. D'Osato and I were colleagues at West Mass Elder Care at that time. I found $40,000 in unbilled revenue. I have experience with contracts, I have experience with funding, I have experience with money problems and I have a record of finding solutions. I'm completely opposed to there only being six apparatus. I'm completely committed to bringing back Engine Two and I'm completely opposed to brownouts and I will put my expertise to work to find the solution to have all the engines online. When I started college in 1983 at Assumption, Nightline, a national TV program, was running a show called Hoyoke, A City in Flames. It was a national program for one week. I was embarrassed at that point to tell people I was from Hoyoke. If I'm a city councillor, I will not allow that to happen again. I won't allow it to continue and as I've done before, I'll find the money and I'll find the solution.
Thank you. Juan Anderson, you have one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, James. I agree with you. You would find the solution and I believe that. I believe that to be true. But so would I. Everything you just said is something that I'm capable of doing as well. So, I just know one thing for sure, is that in order to prepare, you have to include everybody, okay? You have to include everybody. That's very, very, very important. And when you said that you, you know, you had no problems talking to the people in Ward Six, but again, you forgot about Bowden Village and Jarvis Heights and that's important as well. So, anyways, with that, thank you.
Actually, I can say with a completely 100% of conviction and a clear conscience, no, I didn't forget the people in Bowden Village and Jarvis Heights. I've been through both of those places twice. I was hosted one time by Rosa Gonzalez, who's the former head of the Neighborhood Association in Bowden Village. Rosa and I walked through Bowden Village and we talked with everyone. And Rosa and I walked through Jarvis Heights together and we talked with everyone. And the second time I visited and I talked to all the constituents, all the citizens of Hoyoke who live in those areas, I went with Lumari Reyes and we talked with everyone. And I went through Jarvis Heights and I went through Bowden Village. And you know what? I'll do it again and I will continue to talk with everyone. And I'll tell you this, my Spanish is not great. Estudio español un poco, estudio español en la universidad de cuatro años. Hablo español un poco, leo español un poco, escribo español. I do not claim to be fully bilingual and I'm impressed that you are, but I will learn and I will learn more.
Thank you, your time is up. We conclude with this, the second round of questions and now let's hear the question by Maggie McAndrew, staff reporter of the Holyoke Herald, who is here as well, joining us representing the youth in our community.
I just wanted to thank everyone for this opportunity to grow as a student journalist. My question for you tonight is what is one specific challenge facing your ward and how do you plan to address it?
One specific challenge?
So, we will start now, beginning with Mr. James Ronald and going backwards now.
Sure. Well, I've had a lot of challenges brought to me by people as I walk through the ward and as I've talked to everybody. One of the challenges that's facing Ward Six, and my understanding is from talking to the councilors from other wards and attending other ward meetings, I've attended the Ward Five meetings with Linda Vakin, I've attended Ward Three meetings with David Bartley, is speeding and cut-throughs in the city. People everywhere tell me, I heard a story from a guy on West Franklin Street when I was out doing door-to-door about a truck coming up 391 and treating the whole street like it was an off-ramp and never slowing down. Hit a dog, killed someone's pet, never stopped, just kept going. So, one solution, two solutions I think we could look at for that is, a lot of people ask about speed bumps. Can we have speed bumps on our street? Can we slow people down? I've talked with Mike McManus at the DPW. Mike tells me how it messes up plowing. But they have temporary speed bumps. Why can't the DPW invest in maybe 10, 12 of these temporary movable speed bumps? Put them in places in the city, slow people down, leave it there for a month, let them not know, is it going to be there? Will it be there tonight? Won't it be there tonight? Move it to other streets. That's an investment we can make in safety to keep Ward Six and all of Hoyoke safe. The other thing I think we could do is we can look at the better use of auxiliary police in Hoyoke for trafficking and maybe parking issues. Free them, free up our police for other types of crime issues and response and proactive policing. We have auxiliary police in Hoyoke. I'm very good friends with Chief Dietrich and Chief Dietrich tells me that this is something they'd certainly be willing to look at. These are sworn officers who can go out and take some of this pressure off and address this concern that seems to be present in Ward Six and all the city.
Juan Anderson Burlos.
I'm going to agree with James there. Not just this year, but last year, I spoke to this gentleman twice and his main concern was his grandson. He tells me he won't let his grandson play in front of the house. And that's because there's a stop sign there. It's also known to the neighborhood as a cut-through. I can't imagine having my grandson and me worried, you know, what if he comes out of the house and he gets hit by a car? I cannot, I don't even want to play with that thought. It would really break my heart and I wouldn't know what to do. But I do know this, working closely with every single department in the city is important and how you open the dialogue and communicate to them the importance of what needs to get done to address these issues are also important. People don't like to be talked down to. People deserve respect. So, it is very important when you're working with these departments that you collaborate together and figure out a solution. That is how we get things done. My safety, your safety, your children's safety. If we just sat down in a healthy conversation and talked about creating a solution that works for everyone, there's been too many pointing fingers, too many arguments and I don't believe in a closed door because you can't hear the voice on the other side. So, it is very, it's very important that we learn to communicate in a respectable manner.
Thank you. And James Ronald has one-minute rebuttal.
Thank you. Well, I agree. We agree again. Communication is key. I taught, like I said, I talked with Mike McManus about this already. I've been friends with Mike for years. I talked with Chief Dietrich about this already, the club I mentioned earlier, Ronnie, the chief is a member of the Beavers Club. I've known Ron for years. I can work collaboratively, I think, with anybody in city government and I already have. You know, I have, somebody asked me one day when I was out doing the door-to-door about working with the mayor's office. There seems to be this idea that I wouldn't be able to work with the mayor's office as well as maybe some other people. I've already got two commendations sitting in my office at work from programs I've done with the mayor's office, creating a student internship program over the summer for kids in Hoyoke to have jobs in the mayor's office that we successfully did. And successfully working and talking with every department head in the city when we were asked to come in from mass rehab and do a presentation on the ADA and its implementation in the city. I've already worked with the city and with all the department heads.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. So, listen, again, I know that this is a debate and I'm supposed to find something, I don't know, smart, to win this guy. To me, I need the voters to realize and understand that your concerns are my concerns and that you should feel comfortable to come to me with anything, no matter how small or how big. My obligation, and I expect to be held accountable, is to come to your door when you have an issue. Because like I said, my concerns and your concerns, they're one and the same. We are human beings, we just want to be heard. And to me, I will accomplish that. I promise. Anyone that knows me, I don't break a promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's listen to Josie Valentin.
So, it's really hard to kind of narrow it down to one issue, so I'm not going to follow the instructions, but that's okay. I'm going to think of it more as the overall topic of quality of life issues and I'm going to speak about this in a way where the councilors for Wards One, Two and Four have very similar scenarios because we are the ones with the wards that are most densely populated in terms of the buildings and the number of residents that are in specific blocks. And so, we have unique challenges that other wards in the city don't have. We have the challenges of alleys. Alleyways are everyone's nightmare. We have the challenge, I see my constituents nodding their heads in the back, we have the challenge of speeding in Ward Four because the way it's formed as a grid, people are trying to beat the stop signs. We have the challenge of trash, which is why since I've been in office, we do trash and ward cleanups that are with the community that we're working as a group. And so, Wards One, Two and Four work very closely together and I'm thankful to my colleagues because we're always taking calls for each other because people don't always know where their ward ends. But it's also about the collaboration with the city departments. And so, DPW, the Board of Health, the Police Department, these folks are all on my speed dial and I'm constantly contacting them and meeting with them. I actually met with the Board of Health before I was even sworn in my first term because I wanted to work on what were the policies and the ordinances that we had in the city regarding blight and vacant buildings. And so, I'm always making sure that we continue these conversations at the forefront because it is part of how we make sure that our city improves and our city continues to grow in ways in which the community is involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie Valentin. Now let's listen to Darlene Elias for Ward Three.
I've done a significant amount of door knocking this season and have spoken a lot to residents, some of which are in this room tonight. And the four major issues for our ward that I keep hearing over and over again has to do with traffic, panhandling, increased crime and responsible business development. And these are all issues that are very serious and again, I see things in a very systemic way. These are things that are happening in our ward due to issues that are happening in the larger city of Holyoke. David has done a good job in the sense that he tries to reach out to the residents with his monthly ward meeting, but I would take a different approach to that. I think that the ward is large enough that each neighborhood and section of the ward has distinct issues that are prevalent to them alone. And so, the way I would address many of these issues is that I would enlist the support of residents to help deal and address with these issues. Their voice needs to be heard, they understand the community best, they know the problems that are going on. And in fact, many of them enlightened me to many of these issues of traffic and panhandling, increased crime and responsible business development. I was impressed with one particular group who advocated against an auto parts opening up off a south street. They didn't want it, it was an empty lot next to Peck School and they did a really good job advocating for themselves because they understood the issue. And that's the kind of grassroots movement that I would advocate for within our ward.
Now let's listen to David Bartley.
So, I really appreciate everybody's comments tonight preceding me because I think they're all on point. I think the group that my worthy opponent just referenced, they coalesced at a Ward Three meeting that I hosted. In fact, I brought the applicant to a Ward Three meeting where they got a chance to meet the applicant. And so, and I think that's really, this is such a great question because it's really is so broad, but yet you can drill down if you want and you heard some of the other folks on the panel doing just that. To me, let me just try to answer directly. The one question, the one issue, it's an age-old question. How do we get you, the voters, involved? How do we get us as elected officials, as candidates, in touch with you? How do we bring your voices to the table? Once your voices are brought to the table, how do we advocate best on your behalf? That is the age-old question. That's representative democracy. I hope I've done a good job. I hope I've listened. I've tried to be innovative, I've tried to have Ward Three meetings, I have email, I have texts, I have nearly 500 emails on a regular email list that I sent out the last several years, telling people what is happening in City Hall, what's happening in Ward Three, what's happening in Holyoke in general. Quite often I get feedback, quite often I don't. So, I'm going to try to continue what I'm doing with the Ward Three meetings with my colleague Dennis Burks, who's running Unopposed on the school board and with my friend Glenn Sexton from the Neighborhood Watch from the Sheriff's Department. I'm going to keep working on these things, but if there's a better way, I'm all ears. And thank you for the question.
Darlene, you have one-minute rebuttal.
With all due respect, David, I think where we differ is that it's one thing to inform the residents and it's another to empower them to make change. And many of the residents are feeling not listened to and disempowered and wanting to change, wanting change in leadership. And in fact, some of them have said to me specifically that they want a new voice in Ward Three.
Well, yeah, that's, and yeah, I appreciate the respectful comment and that's why we have a democracy, that's why we're going to have an election in a week. I don't ever talk big before an election, I just humbly ask for people's votes and the consideration at the poll. I mean, please, please look at what my accomplishments, please look at how I've represented you in city council and make your determination therefrom. Rhetoric is all great and good and you've heard a lot of it tonight, but I'll certainly let my voting record speak for itself, my background, my education and my passion for the city of Holyoke, I'll let that speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, David Bartley. Now let's hear Jay Anthony Smith, candidate for Ward Two.
So, Maggie, that's a very broad question, but I'm going to answer it in the best way that I can because I live in one of the wards that are facing some of the most outrageous of issues, whether it's drugs, crime, gentrification, fires, you know, to having a lack of voice. And you can only pick so many issues to talk about within these two minutes, but I remember one day I was canvassing and I was knocking on the street and it was a rough street and no one was opening their doors. And then one lady finally opened a door and I always start, you know, what's an issue within the city that you would like to see addressed? I always ask that question. And she just slammed the door in my face, but before she did, she plainly said something that the city of Holyoke will not address. And I thought about that for a second. And so, I started making a list of every single issue that people want to be heard, whether it's something, you know, that it's probably not going to happen like a new daycare center or pharmacy, or whether it's something like a stop sign. I think that's the biggest point, that we need to give these people a voice and not bandwagoning on a few issues, whether, you know, it's fires, whether it's... bandwagoning on a few issues, whether, you know, it's fires, whether it's marijuana, whatever it may be. I think that we need to focus on the issues that are going on every single day in people's lives, and we need to ask them, even if it takes one by one, door by door, we need to talk to them and ask them, what do you think is going on in the city of Holyoke, and what would you like solved? Thank you.
Nelson Roman.
Hello? Yes, thank you. This is where my opponent and I differ. I have been, in these last years, I have not stopped knocking on doors, I have not stopped talking to residents, I have not stopped listening. And I haven't had as many doors slammed in my face, yes, some, but that's why I'm all about putting people first, and really listening, engaging what the community wants. And I would invite my opponent, I know he's been invited by Carmen Ocaso, our Neighborhood Association president, to come out and participate in our neighborhood meetings, but we had a listening and visioning session, and I'm going to break the rules too a little bit. A real City Council of Ward Two is going to know that we have four distinct and different neighborhoods. And in South Holyoke, it's around rent control, it's around gentrification, it's around blight, it's about lack of jobs, it's about high incarceration rates, and the fact that these men and women who are coming back from formerly being incarcerated have no jobs. It's in Ingleside, traffic, terrible potholes, and terrible road prowling, am I right, Jennifer Keat, and the winter terrible road prowling. It's in Springdale, the fact that Springdale Park still looks like crap. Where's the new playscape? I would encourage my colleagues to approve the bond package that the mayor put forward to redo Springdale Park. It's about in Churchill, safety, and really dark lighting, you can't see one place to the next. It's listening, and that's why we form neighborhood associations. It's really getting in there, and just because you don't see it, and my opponent isn't there, doesn't mean that I haven't filed over 200 orders, and that a majority of them are stop signs and handicap stickers, or cutting down trees, or addressing the quality of life issues that my opponent might not see, but I would challenge him today to come to a South Holyoke Neighborhood Association meeting. We were waiting on him for the cleanup, we were waiting on him for the festival. We need to have someone who's truly going to be there, and I don't just talk the talk, I walk the walk. I'm there with Carmen, with Jerry, with Felicita in Churchill, with Jennifer, with Guillermo Mina, with Anna, with Raoul, with all of these citizens, walking with them and not in front of them. So that is a complete mischaracterization of these last two years, and we're going to keep working to put people first, and really put tangible orders forward to change the lives of our constituents in Ward Two. And so, the biggest thing is safety, I'm going to take that over in my one minute, but overall, it's safety, 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 safety in all of those four neighborhoods.
Thank you, Nelson. Jay Anthony, you have one minute rebuttal.
Well, I differ a little bit, because the Ward Two neighborhood consists of a lot more than just a handful of people. It consists of a lot of people who do not make it to this table, who do not make it to those associate meetings, because they have jobs, because they have children to take of, whatever the reason may be, we need to start thinking about those people who do not show up to those meetings, the people who cannot sit here in this room. Look around you, half of the chairs here are empty. But yet, we're in Ward One, we're in Ward One, one of the most devastated neighborhoods, but yet, half of this room is empty. I think that's one of the biggest problems that we face here, that we're saying that we're doing this, and this, and this, but yet, the rooms keep showing up empty. That is what I'm trying to make a point today. Thank you very much.
Nelson, you have one minute rebuttal.
Yes, and that's exactly why I continue to go to the doors of the people. It's not just about meetings, and my opponent would know that if he is out there at all of the doors, like I am. And its number one issue is safety, because we found out when we started these neighborhood association meetings, and when I go talk to the people at the doors, that there's car break-ins in Springdale and Ingleside. Everyone got their windows smashed. In South Holyoke, there's a huge safety issue. And where I would challenge this administration, and that's why I'm proud that I actually created with Kevin Jordan, the civilians statistician position, which I still would advocate that the mayor send us the package to fund that position. We don't have the data to actively attack crime. And so, when we hear this narrative that crime is down citywide, in Ward Two, I could tell you homeowners are selling because there's drug dealers on their street, and the police department still haven't addressed that. I can tell you the window smashings are occurring. So I am in the doors, not just at meetings, not just here, not just in council chambers, but I have not stopped knocking on doors just because it's an election time. I'm there every year, 365 days a year, every single day, I'm out there talking to the people.
Let's now listen to Juan Sanchez, candidate for Ward One.
Thank you again. Thank you, Maggie, for that question regarding the biggest issue in the ward. For me, there's a lot of issues, but they all wrap around one big, huge issue, and that for me is constituent services. Are people being heard? Are businesses being heard? When residents and businesses reach out, is there someone on the other line answering that phone call? Not on lunchtime, not on the weekends, but 24/7? Because when you give yourself to be a public servant, that means that you're serving the public, no matter to the capacity that you can, no matter what time of the day it is. I have friends on the council who pick up the phone at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning at times, when they have an issue from a resident and/or a business. With that said, when you're talking about public safety, if someone is calling their councillor to complain about the fact, I'll give you a prime example, Rosary Towers, where seniors have been complaining about getting robbed and beaten up. If they're calling their city councillor and no one's responding, how is anyone going to respond to that issue? Or the issue of flyers, if no one's speaking, if someone's calling saying, hey, I have an issue with my landlord, or the building, and no one's there to respond or speak up, once again, you know, there's a real issue. So when you talk about all these issues in Ward One, it all wraps around one of the biggest, the biggest issue for me, which is constituent services, ensuring that when you call, you got to call back, when you email, you get an email back, and that that person constantly follows up. This is not coming from me, it's coming from the many residents and businesses that I've spoken to in Ward One. I've been door knocking since April, that's five to six months of door knocking. I've door knocked the ward five times, I've knocked on people's doors, and I've gotten the same complaint over and over again. For me, it's constituent services. Thank you.
Now, let's listen to Gladys Lebron Martinez.
Thank you for that question. Let me tell you that every time, in any resident or constituent, whether there are voters or not, who have called me, who have emailed me, I immediately file that order. What I do want to say is that we have a holdup on some of the orders that have been requested by our constituents. I also feel there is a need of also, of some type of way of coming up with a sort of sheet for people to understand the process when an order is filed, sometimes I think that's not understood, that they call me, they tell me there's an issue of a parking need, or there's an issue of a handicap, and how it goes through the process so that they can understand. Every single call, every single order that I have received, I have filed. We had an issue also in the Department of Public Works, where some orders are even coming up at this point from last year, because we had an over, a turnover from our superintendent, even from our engineer, that some orders that we have, as colleagues that have also filed, that I know, have not come up, because they was held up in the process of this person hired. I do know that there's some issues in quality of life that has been an issue, and it's regarding police response, and we have to come up with a way of a different style where people can feel safe to call, because they also do not want to make the phone call, because they said they don't want to be identified. This happened when I was in South Holyoke, doing some community organizing, and we had to come up with a form that people will put in the mail, and they didn't necessarily have to say who they were, but help us identify, what were the issues, so that they are themselves, are not the ones calling directly. So I've been in the trenches of this, I lived in this neighborhood for 20 years, I know the issues that are facing us, but we also have to put more forces of people working with us, meaning our residents, feeling comfortable to share and express their issues that they're facing, so that we can put in forward in orders. Thank you.
And let's listen to rebuttal by Juan Sanchez.
Thank you for that, councillor. With all due respect, councillor Lebron, you claim that you've responded to every phone call, and every email, and ran every order. So I'm going to assume that that means 23 people have only reached out to you in the past two years, because you've only written 23 orders, putting you in sixth out of the seven ward councils, you came in sixth place. From 2013, 2015, you only wrote 42 orders, which I'm going to assume is only 42 people wrote out to you, because once again, you came in sixth out of seventh place amongst the ward councillors. And from 2012, 2014, your first term, you only wrote 21 orders, putting you in seventh out of seventh place. So you can claim and state that you are writing every order and proposal, but the numbers are the numbers, and the numbers are that in your six years, you've come in either sixth or seventh place in terms of orders being presented by ward councillors. Thank you.
Gladys, you have one minute rebuttal.
And again, it is what I've been empowering people to understand, that they are the ones that need to tell us what the issues are at times. There's no way you can tell me unless you're not working at all, and that you're just out there all the time, like you say, that you're going to be able to get all the issues that you've gotten since April to now. Let me say that any time, and still to this day, I do be out, I'm out there frequently, for, you know, for opportunities that I can support in the neighborhood. And again, these are the orders that they called upon, these are the orders they either emailed me on, and I did respond to them, they're there. So I'm not going to make up orders that I have not been called upon. The first one that I was asked when I ran for office was to fix the park, Penya Park, that was the first thing I did, within my first three months of being on board. That park got fixed, it was a situation with a warranty of a sprinkler that was set up, and for five years was never working, and no one took, no one did anything about it. Thank you.
We are finishing the third round of questions presented by our panel, and we are going to start one more round. This time, there will be no rebuttals, it will be just straight answers. You will have two minutes to answer questions submitted by the members of the public. These questions were submitted as the public arrived today at this forum, and they were selected by the organizing committee. So we will have our panel to present the questions submitted by the public, and for answering these questions, we will do it in alphabetical order, being Juan Anderson Burgos, David Bartley, James Brunold, Darlene Elias, Gladys Lebron Martinez, Nelson Roman, Juan Sanchez, Jay Anthony Smith, and Josie Valentin. So let's hear the first question submitted by the public.
What initiatives or specific plans do you have to work with ward and neighborhood associations? And please give specific examples.
We will start with Juan Anderson Burgos.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
What initiatives or specific plans do you have to work with ward and neighborhood associations? And please give specific examples.
Well, my initiative is to work closely with the voters, the residents. And I plan to hold meetings, either monthly or every two months, because it is important for me to know and be kept up to date on new concerns that are going on in Ward Six, not only just Ward Six, but throughout the city. It's very important for me to stay informed, that way I can actually go out there and do something about it. Now, living in Holyoke all my life, I plan to also personally make appointments, and those appointments will be based on, you know, who first come, first served. So if there's an issue going on in a specific part of the ward, if I get a call, I will be there at...
Thank you.
Oops, sorry.
Let's continue with David Bartley.
It's the same question for all of us?
Yes, the same question for all candidates. Make sure that your microphones are turned on.
I think it's, thanks to the public for the question. I appreciate that, I'm going to keep doing the same thing I've been doing, so let's have my, keep going with the monthly meetings, be available via text, email, in person, however you want to reach out to me, I'm available, whether it's Ward Three or citywide. I filed orders for, touched upon, every ward in this community, and I'm proud to say that. So I'm available, I just enjoy engaging the public, I enjoy talking to people, I enjoy, that's why I enjoy campaigning, frankly. And this is, to me, this is a lot of fun, so otherwise, if you're not having fun at it, then really, you shouldn't be involved. So, talking to folks when they come to the Ward Three meetings, to me, it's just engaging firsthand, and frankly, maybe they're not being empowered, but I feel empowered, and bringing their voices to City Council, I think it does empower them. Thank you.
Thank you, David Bartley. Now, we will continue with James Brunold.
Yes, to speak to specific plans for working with the neighborhood and neighborhood associations. The current ward councillor, Kevin Jordan, has had a tradition of having ward meetings approximately twice a year, which is a good start, but I would commit to having certainly more ward meetings than that. I would say, Juan said once a month maybe, or every other month, I would say certainly a minimum of four to six times a year. Kevin has had the ward meetings at Sullivan School, which is a good location, but I would also like to move the meetings around the ward and hold them in different spots. I think, even though it's slightly outside the ward, I think for people down on Linden and Locust and some of that area, the senior center could be a good spot to meet. I think David Bartley in starting an email chain for the ward and people is a great idea, and that's something I would like to imitate and emulate to keep that contact going. And I've had questions from some of the people when I've knocked on doors about restarting the Neighborhood Crime Watch Association, so I'm looking to bring in Captain Moyardi to meet with them on that issue.
Thank you. Now, let's continue with Darlene Elias.
So I think to be a city councillor requires more than once a month intervention. I really believe that the issues are really different and relevant for different residents, individuals, and families. For example, the issues that the elderly are dealing with in my ward are very much different than what working families are dealing with in my ward. The issues that working families and parents are dealing with in regards to the educational issues that our city are confronted with are very different. The traffic-related issues on South Street and Laurel, and North Hampton Street might be very much different than the issues that the upper section off of Homestead Avenue is dealing with. So I think it's really important to be specific and cater to individual needs, and the individual needs of the residents and the community, and work to embrace people where they're at.
Thank you, Darlene Elias, and now it's the turn for Gladys Lebron Martinez.
Same question?
Same question.
Yes, a great question. We actually began an initiation of an association, they're calling it a council, because we just learned there's other association happening within the wards, and the group decided that it should be like a council instead seeing that there's other associations. So that's one of my first steps that, you know, it has been considered. I, you know, know that this is very transient or moving population due to the housing stock in the neighborhood, that they're not there long enough to either, you know, have the address or having the phone numbers. And I have left some money aside to cover some radio spots to do events announcements. Also, considering to have, once an order that my colleague Nelson filed to have the City Hall be a hold site for us, that I can have a monthly open hours.
Thank you, Gladys. Next, Nelson Roman.
Yes, thank you, and I want to thank the neighborhood associations, the four, the three of them from South Holyoke, Churchill, Springdale, Ingleside, who are part of sponsoring this tonight. So what I would like to continue to do is actually spread out Springdale and Ingleside, Jennifer Keat is actually my neighbor now, next door, so I would like Ingleside to have its own distinct neighborhood association, so that's something that I'd do different this coming term, and continue to support. I am proud to put my money where my mouth is, I pay for all of the food for all the association meetings, and we meet the first, I want the public to know you're all invited, first Wednesday of the month at Felicita New Horizons for Families. Second Wednesday of the month, and that's for Churchill, second Wednesday of the month is the Springdale Ingleside, and that's at the waterfront, down at Donny's Place, come enjoy barbecue. And I thank my colleagues, Dave, Pete Tomlin, and Joltin Joe McGivern, who came to that as well. We've invited police, fire, and then the last one of every month is the South Holyoke at Nueva Esperanza, where I work. Everyone from the public is invited to come to those association meetings, they exist. We'll probably spread out Ingleside, and I just want to thank everyone and these association presidents, Paul Audra, Carmen Jerry, and Felicita. Thank you.
Now, let's listen to Juan Sanchez.
Thank you, whoever wrote that question regarding neighborhood associations. Number one, I do want to say there has been a neighborhood association created, I want to be clear that it's only for the flats neighborhood. Ward One is bigger than the flats, the flats only encompasses Precinct A. Precinct B consists of Newton Street, Worcester Place, High, Elm, Pine, Maple, Lyman Street, and all the homes and all those neighborhoods around there. I know that the neighborhood association is supposed to be larger than the flats, however, there hasn't been any outreach to the entire ward, only in the flats neighborhood is the only place I've seen those flyers. So I want to ensure that we have a neighborhood association for every neighborhood, I want to create the Newton Street... I want to create the Newton Street Neighborhood Association, the Tree Street Neighborhood Association, and work with the two existing ones. The one that they've started, One Holyoke has started down in the Flats, and the existing Limon Tier Association, to ensure that all residents of the ward, no matter where they live, have the opportunity to get involved. People are hungry in my neighborhood. They want festivals. They want block parties. They want neighborhood cleanups. And all we need is somebody to be there and put it into motion, and I'm here to be that person. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan Sanchez. Now let's hear the answer by Jay Anthony Smith.
In regards to how to solve all these grand issues that we see in the city of Holyoke, I think that we need to stop looking at them on a microscopic scale. We need to stop looking at each individual issue and trying to come up with an individual solution. These are together a complex issue, and we need complex solutions. What I believe is one of the best things that is gonna work is unity. Unity is the only way that I believe that the city of Holyoke can solve all of these issues that are presented in front of them. Division creates nothing but he says, she says, backroom politics, whatever, you know? And we sit up in a table like this and argue over politics, rather than coming together with police, with, you know, commissions, with organizations, with everyone we need to, you know? Tapestry Health with Holyoke Health Center, the colleges, the high schools, with everyone we need to, to just come together and find the solution. And I think that's one of the solutions that can be placed forward, is creating a large committee or organization to do this. Thank you.
And now let's listen to the answer by Josie Valentin.
Thank you. So the Ward Four has a neighborhood meeting that is actually the second Tuesday of every month. That's at 6:00. And that's done as a collaboration with the Sheriff's Department, with Rafael Santos, who's been a phenomenal partner to me since day one in terms of all the quality of life issues in the ward. We've also usually at that meeting had a representative from the Holyoke Police Department, so that when residents come in, they can speak specifically about concerns that they may not feel comfortable actually calling the Police Department about, but they're able to then speak face-to-face with someone who's usually one of the captains that is able to come to that. The other piece is that I really pride myself in being very accessible and approachable. I've been told that I've raised the bar in terms of constituent services and access. And so my residents know that they can call me, text me, Facebook me, tweet me. They write me handwritten letters that they mail to my house. They stop me at Stop &amp; Shop, whatever it is. It's about being accessible and being available to them.
Thank you, Josie Valentin. And with this, we reach the end of the questions. I know that plenty of questions are there, and we are gonna keep these cards. This will be actually part of a future series of sessions and event with city councilors, not only the ward candidates, so in this case, the ward councilors, but also the invitation will be extended for councilors at large and the mayor, so we can continue this momentum of having public sessions that are shared with the public in a venue like this, and also in the spaces that we have as our local media outlets, like Holyoke Media, Radioplasma, and the Holyoke Herald. I want to thank the candidates for answering the questions. And now let's move to the closing statements. This will be in reverse order of words going from seven to one. We will begin with James Brunold, then Juan Anderson, Josie Valentin, Darlene Elias, David Bartley, Jay Anthony Smith, Nelson Roman, Juan Sanchez, and Gladys Lebron Martinez. You have two minutes.
Thank you. So in my opening statement, I likened a campaign and an election to being a bit like a job interview. So a couple of the other things that you consider when you're interviewing candidates for a job is the background of the people, their honesty, their transparency, and maybe their references. So one of, two of the things I'd like to highlight in regards to Juan, as he puts himself forward for public service, is Juan's voting record that I mentioned in the opening is not back over time. It's in a recent period of history, right up to 2014, that he's missed 60% of the votes that we've taken locally, state, or federally for various offices. The other thing I talked about in the opening is taking money from businesses that will have an interest that people will be voting on in session in the upcoming City Council term. To take money from any business, no matter what the nature of the business is, is a conflict of interest. One of the other things you look at in a job interview is what are the references that people have? So I'd like to mention quickly three of my references. I was endorsed by Patty Devine, former Ward Counselor and at-large counselor, who says, "Jim will not be a yes man. He holds no agenda but to represent all of us to the fullest." I was represented by Ray Fair, who said, "Jim is honest. He's compassionate, and Jim will be an independent voice for Ward Six." And I was endorsed by the current Ward Six Counselor, the outgoing City Council President, Kevin Jordaine, who says, "Jim has the experience needed and the work ethic to be a good counselor. Jim will be an independent voice for Ward Six." I'd like to close by saying, "I am Jim Brunold, and I pledge to be an independent voice for our ward, and I pledge to represent you, the members of the ward, and the constituents of Holyoke, and only you at City Hall. And I ask for your vote for Jim Brunold for Ward Six on November 7th." Thank you.
Thank you, James Brunold. Now let's listen to Juan Anderson Burgos.
All the bashing. First of all, I want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity to express our visions for this city. I also want to thank everyone up here for putting themselves out there. It's not always easy, but service to a community you love is worth it. I began by talking about the values that were passed on to me by my grandparents and how they helped to mold the man who sits here today. Earlier this year, on Father's Day, my son blessed me with the news that I'm going to be a grandfather. I looked at the news, and I thought about all the possibilities my grandparents had in their minds. And now I'm seeing all of the opportunities I want for my own granddaughter. I cannot express how important it is for me to be part of paving the way, not only for my grandchild, but for your children, your grandchildren, and the families that are yet to come here. I've enjoyed being invited into people's homes to hear their stories, their struggles, and their dreams. I understand them because I share their common interest of being a part of a city that has so much pride and so much potential. We need people who truly believe in that potential. Vote for me, Juan Anderson Burgos, at Sullivan School next Tuesday, November 7th. Juan Anderson Burgos, your neighbor, your partner, your voice on the City Council.
Thank you. Closing statement by Josie Valentin.
Thank you. When I decided to run for office, I had no real plan to run for office. It happened because I realized that there was an issue in City Council chambers in terms of representation, that out of 15 councilors, it was not matching up with the 50% Puerto Rican Latino population we have in this city, that the number of women on the City Council is very small, that the number of folks from underrepresented groups in general was very small. And so here I showed up with three checkboxes, woman, Latina, and lesbian. And none of those technically belong in politics if we look at what it's supposed to look like. But I continue to break down that barrier. I continue to break down those stereotypes. And it's not because I have those identities, but it's because I put the work in, and I work hard and I work consistently. So when I look at my history here on the council, when I look at the conversations that have happened in council chambers because of issues that I have been able to bring to the table, issues that people don't want to talk about, issues that are uncomfortable, but that in reality, our communities are talking about, and they want to have a place where these issues are being heard. That, to me, is rewarding. That, to me, means I'm doing my work. Because a lot of people can just, you know, do the call to DPW and get the pothole fixed, and vote on the budget, and do this and do that. But you need to have dedication. You need to have the heart, and you need to have the stamina to do this work. It's not easy work, but it's extremely rewarding. And at the end of the day, I can feel comfortable with the decisions I've made. It doesn't mean that we don't have to see eye to eye, because we don't, for every single thing. But at the end of the conversation, we can feel that an exchange has taken place. Ideas have been shared, and we can look at how those decisions and those conversations are able to fix and mold what we have in our city. And it's something that, like I said, it's not easy, but it's something that it's a privilege. Thank you.
Now, closing statement by Darlene Elias.
If you want, excuse me, because I have a cold. If you want a city councilor who is socially progressive and fiscally responsible, I urge you to vote for me. As a city councilor and a socially progressive individual, I will embrace people of all races, gender, backgrounds, and cultures, and work to create an inclusive environment where all will be encouraged to contribute to the betterment of our community and enjoy the richness and diversity that Holyoke has to offer. As a public servant and the voice of Ward Three, I will be fiscally responsible and work to reduce the budget deficit and any additional taxes and fees incurred by homeowners and engage in responsible business development. Of particular interest to me will be encouraging residents of Ward Three to be a part of the changes that they want to see in their neighborhoods and advocate for them at City Hall. I also will strive to work with other city councilors in improving the outlook and development of the neighborhoods in their wards. One of the major struggles that we have in Holyoke is not being able to come out of our comfort zones and advocate for the well-being of others in neighborhoods that they don't live in. In the words of Martin Luther King, "The ultimate measure of a person is not where they stand in moments of comfort, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy." It is when we care for one another and look at the issues that we are facing in Holyoke in a systemic way that we will begin to see progress in our beloved city. My intent is to serve the public with integrity, responsibility, and commitment at all times. I kindly ask for your vote on November 7th. Darlene Elias for Ward Three.
Thank you, Darlene. Closing statement by David Bartley.
Good evening, everybody. Johan, thank you. I really respect you so much, and it was an honor to be on your radio show. To the panel, Manuel, Terri, who I've known forever, Maggie, good luck with your future. I think you did a great job tonight. You asked the best question out of the three of them, bar none. To my colleagues sitting here, well, before I forget, to my colleagues in the audience, Council Lopez, Council McGivern, Council Tolman, it's been an honor. Council Devine, who's here as well. We never served together, but she's been a mentor to me for most of my life. And to my colleagues here and to the candidates, it's been an honor to share the podium with you. To the voters of Ward Three in Holyoke, it's been the privilege of my life to serve as your representative on the Ward Three City Council. I've enjoyed every minute, and it's been such a positive experience. I love hearing some of the voices tonight. I've learned a lot tonight, and I took a lot of notes. I'm a note taker at City Council, and I happen to be a note taker here for debates. And again, I think it's gonna make me, at a minimum, a better person, but I think it's gonna make me a much more effective city councilor. That being said, I again humbly ask for the vote of the Ward Three voters. It's been such a pleasure. So November 7th is Election Day. Vote either at Metcalf School for 3B or at the fire station for 3A. I look forward to continuing to serve, and thank you so much for your attention tonight, to everybody for coming down and staying. I know those chairs aren't the most comfortable. So again, thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you, David Bartley. And now, closing statement by Jay Anthony Smith.
I'd like to say that I hope you all have a great night, and I hope that the time you've spent here was well worthwhile. And I'd like to thank Johan and everyone who helped put all of this together. Things like this need to happen on a larger scale, on a more frequent scale. But until then, we have, you know, the great people putting this together, working vigorously to put it together and make sure that things like this happen. But I'd like to just say that I hope you think about all the issues that were presented here today and the solutions that were presented today. And if you think of something, please, I'm sure that I, myself, and all of my constituents are urging you to step forward, give them a call, send an email, a text, whatever it may be. Knock on a door if you have to, and get your voice out there, and make sure that you're represented, and your opinion has value, because it really does. And I'd just like to say that it's an honor to also be here as one of the youngest candidates. I represent a very misrepresented group. And it's a lot to stand up here today and have all that behind me. I'm 19. I'm a person of color. I just graduated high school. And it's a lot to sit here and stand forward. So whether I lose or I win, it was enough to say that I got to run. So thank you. I hope you have a great night.
Thank you, Jay Anthony Smith. Closing statement by Nelson Roman.
Yes, and I thank you, and I want to thank my opponent, Jay Anthony, for being strong in spite of all that adversity. And I want to also thank all of you tonight, my colleagues, all of you, the presenters. And I want us to remember our journey over the last two years and where we've come. I came from homelessness and staying in a tent off of 391 to now serving in one of the greatest honors of my life as your Ward Two City Council. We ran on a campaign of putting people first and not forgetting one person or soul. But what have we done over these last two years? We've helped put and develop over $9 million of business in Ward Two. We've helped form three neighborhood associations. We've started the Taste of South Holyoke Festival together. We put in over 150 orders and seen 85 passed. We've had infrastructure improvements in sidewalks and parking lines and stop signs and handicap stickers. I've served on the Development and Government Relations Committee, and I've learned from my mentor, Dave Bartley and Josie, and as the chairman of the Joint Committee of the City Council and School Committee, and making that a permanent committee, to say that the council will always talk about school issues as well as council issues. And I've gotten another great honor in my life. I'm now the Executive Director of Nueva Esperanza. I get to get up every day and do this work and get paid to focus on not only South Holyoke, but truly all of the cities, parts of this city. And lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't say that one of the best moments of two years ago was meeting the love of my life, Ronnie Manuel Hernandez, and a great mother-in-law, Marilyn, who has really given me strength and courage. And all of you, Carmen, Jerry, Jennifer, Paul, Audra, my dad, Dave, Jos, Jackie, Jos, who are here today, who adopted me and took me in. I thank you, the city of Holyoke, for making me whole and for really making me the man that I am today. And I would be honored to have your vote again on November 7th to serve once again as your Ward Two City Council. Please, por favor, vote for Nelson Roman for Consejar de Barrio Dos. Mil gracias. Un honor, un placer.
Thank you, Nelson Roman. Now, closing statement by Juan Gabriel Sanchez Sanchez.
All right, first of all, I just wanted to once again thank the panel, thank Johan, thank Manuel, Terrence, and Maggie McAndrew. I gotta keep on reading your thing because it's such a nice text that it's hard to read. But with that said, I also want to thank everybody here. I want to thank everybody being up here. As a member of the Green Party, we believe that no one should ever go unchallenged, so I'm happy to see as many people here challenging and the incumbent sitting here as well. I think it's very important for our people to be involved in the electoral process. With that said, I also want to thank my opponent, Council LeBron Martinez, for her years of service, not only as an elected official, but to the community in general, where her work at Career Point with young people back to the 80s, working in Nueva Esperanza, years and years and years of service. I do want to commend her on that. I think it's really important for us to really acknowledge our mentors and leaders in the community. So I do want to thank Gladys LeBron Martinez. With that said, I'm running for Ward One City Council because we're at a crucial time in our ward. There's so much development happening. There's brownouts and fires happening. There's panhandling and crime and poverty and unemployment that's way higher than the city's unemployment rate, by the way, that is happening. And I think it's time for new ideas, a new vision, a new change in the ward. You know, if you're, this is how I put it, my opponent has been there for six years. If in six years, you believe the streets have been cleaner, if you believe that crime has gone down, if you believe that the unemployment rate has gone down, if you believe that the development that's happening in the ward is benefiting every resident of the ward, then I ask you to put your vote for LeBron Martinez. But if you want more equitable development that represents all residents of the ward, if you want neighborhood associations, if you want events, if you really want to engage residents in ways that they feel empowered in the process in ways that they haven't been for years, then I ask you to please put your vote November 7th and put it for me, Juan Gabriel Sanchez, your next Ward One City Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan Sanchez. And now let's listen, closing statement by Gladys Lebron Martinez.
Yes, thank you to all my colleagues sitting here at the table. I also want to thank all of you for coordinating this effort and the audience for coming out in this little rain that has come down this evening. But I just want to say, as I mentioned in my opening statement, I have been committed to this city, whether I've been in politics or not. I do, you know, commend my opponent for running, and it is something... or not. I do, you know, commend my opponent for running, and it is something that he knows I empower our youth to do what they think is best. And I am here regardless if I'm voted in or not voted in. I do promise that the information that I have taken in, as I've been doing door knocking again, and receiving new situations that are facing in the neighborhoods, I also want to address that, let's not forget, he did mention, flats is not the only ward that its, you know, representation is also part of High Street and beyond, Picnelli area, all of these areas, Prospect Heights, that we have to consider. It is a very great, big population being served in these neighborhoods that I do understand this is why when the consideration of an association being considered, that we will consider other areas, because we have to develop differently in other parts. It cannot be the same that what the needs may be in flats. So I want to make sure that you understand that we, if I stay on board, I will be developing other areas with the people's decisions in how they would like to see their wards being developed. I want to thank you again. I will be on the ballot on November 7th, and I look towards your vote, November 7th. At the same time, I want to assure you that jobs will be coming into this neighborhood. They're coming, as a matter of fact, on November 6. Anyone who's listening or watching and who's in the audience, there's going to be a job fair for the first business moving in, the medical marijuana.
Thank you, Gladys.
That is going to have a job fair, November 6 at 6:00 at Gateway City Arts. Thank you.
Thank you to all the candidates for their time, for having this valuable conversation with yourselves and with us as part of the community. Also, we want to thank to our timekeeper, Patty Devine, for such an important job. Same acknowledgement and thanks to our panel, Manuel Frau Ramos from El Sol Latino, Maggie McAndrew, staff reporter of Holyoke Herald, and Terrence Murphy, Commissioner at Parks at Recreation. And also, we want to again thank our sponsors, the Holyoke Public Schools, for supporting this initiative and providing the space here at Kelly School for this forum, the Holyoke Neighborhood Associations, El Sol Latino, the Holyoke Herald, Holyoke Media, the Gandara Youth Development Center, and Radioplasma. We encourage you all to vote next Tuesday, November 7. I'm Johan Rashivega, producer and host of Radioplasma, thanking you for your time. Have a great night.
This was a Radioplasma special presentation. The Holyoke City Council Ward Candidates Forum from Kelly Elementary School in Holyoke, Massachusetts. This event was brought to you as a collaboration of the Holyoke Neighborhood Associations, the Holyoke High Herald, El Sol Latino, Holyoke Media, and Radioplasma. From the Kelly Elementary School, I'm Johan Rashivega. Thank you for listening.